We'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:02. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll have a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. At this time, we have public comment. We give your name, and if you're a township resident or not. And we have three minutes, and you can also speak on every agenda item. Are there any public comments? And remember that the microphone is voice activated, so you have to stand close to it.
May I take my mask off for this?
I can't hear you, hon. Oh, yes.
I'll try to go quickly, and I apologize if I'm talking fast. I am Joe Arnold. I am not a township resident, but I am a property owner, a commercial property owner, located at 265 South Harris Road. And I'm deeply concerned that this property will be adversely affected economically by classifying the area on the east side of Harris Road between Parkview and Russell Street with a proposed NB zoning classification. I've been a license builder, a commercial real estate broker, and a certified commercial investment manager doing location analysis for thirty-some years in commercial and construction, commercial property investment, and development. Before I discuss my reasons why, I wish to express some concerns relative to the manner in which proposed changes are made known to the public. I received no mail notification of any plans that the township was considering zoning changes. I'm told this isn't required, to which I reply, "Why not?" The board is considering changes that could economically affect property owners, many of whom do not live in the township, may not read local news. In my opinion, property owners should be notified. The proposed zoning change is of serious concern to me. The change under consideration will, in my opinion, adversely affect economic development. Of all the business property located on Harris Road north of Ekor's, I've owned property there since 2009. I acquired the property as an investment, and I can tell you it's been very difficult to lease the space out, due in fact to the way the property has been zoned, B1. This zoning classification makes it difficult to put tenants into this type of property. Uses allowed in the B1 district and the proposed NB district. And I'm going to give you a handout. I lost my spot. Are shown in a table in this handout. And I guess I'd ask yourself, if you were looking for a location for the type of business uses allowed in the B1 district, the NB district, would you choose a location like Harris Road, north of Ekor's Road? Would you choose a warehouse-type, an industrial-type building? Because that is what is along there. If you're familiar with this section of Harris Road, all the business buildings are on the east side, between Parkview and Russell. And most of these buildings were built before 1960, when the property was zoned light industrial. Based on a review of township records, sometime between 1961 and '76, the area in question was rezoned and zoned to B1. The effect on the businesses located in this area is best characterized as non-conforming properties that were built and approved as light industrial properties when it was a light industrial district. The impact on this section of town from the standpoint of reinvestment and jobs is obvious. This part of town hasn't thrived, due in part to the stranglehold on usage that is the result of use restrictions associated with the zoning. These are primarily light industrial properties. If anybody drove by the buildings and was asked what type of building they think they are, I think it's pretty fair to say they would refer to them as warehouse industrial properties.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes?
It's been three minutes, but you can also speak on it when it comes up on the agenda as well, so you can continue.
Well, I didn't understand.
No, no, that's fine.
I apologize.
No, 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 you're fine. You can speak at public comment, and you can speak on every agenda item as well.
Oh.
So, can you hold your thought, and we'll come back to you when it comes.
Okay.
It's going to come up on the agenda as well.
All right. I'm out of order, sorry.
No, no, you're not. You're fine. Very fine. Are there any other public comments?
My name is Charmin Spicer. I use the pronouns she and her, and I live at 2266 Merrill in Ypsilanti. I've been a homeowner in Ypsilanti Township for over six years and a resident of Washtenaw County for more than forty years. I'm here today to seek understanding regarding something Supervisor Stumbo said in the February 1st work session. According to the minutes, Supervisor Stumbo said a meeting was held regarding license plate readers and that the sheriff deputies were requesting them. She added that the sheriff had written a policy about this, and it would come back to the board. I'm here out of concern for township residents and with the request that we all be fully and accurately informed about license plate readers being considered for purchase and use in our township. In the short amount of time I had to do research, the information I found raised a lot of questions and fears. To give you an idea of the potential for harm to the community, here are a couple of headlines. California legislation targets police use of license plate readers. Privacy advocates have sounded the alarm over the technology, which is also used by federal government agencies. Documents reveal ICE using driver-location data. I believe members of our community need support for their mental, physical, and emotional well-being. Equipment used to track down potential criminal behavior does not help address the root causes of crime, such as poverty, inequality, lack of support to families and neighborhoods, inaccessibility to services, lack of leadership, and low value placed on children and individual well-being. There are many ways to address the current needs of township residents, and I don't see license plate readers being on that list. I realized, as I was telling my neighbors about these comments and trying to learn more about license plate readers, that I was jumping ahead in anticipation of the negative impacts they could have. So rather than make assumptions, I'm asking Supervisor Stumbo and the full board to find out and to tell us exactly what is happening or not happening regarding the purchase and use of license plate readers in Washtenaw County, i.e. Ypsilanti Township. If there is any possibility that the purchase of this equipment is being considered, I ask that township residents be given opportunities to weigh in with their opinions. Please make sure any actions you take to inform us, for example by inviting Sheriff Clayton to speak at a board meeting, be well-publicized in advance of the event. Thank you.
And I have comments. Thank you. And we will. I just, that was out of comments from meetings we attended, and just so you, we can definitely let you, if you become, when we have a meeting here at the work session, and the Sheriff Clayton always does community engagement meetings on any new technology. We did the same with cameras in the neighborhood. We had meetings throughout the community, and we'll do the same thing again. So, it was, I was reporting out on a meeting that we had, which is just updating everyone. So, when it does come to the community meetings and to the board, absolutely, Sheriff Clayton will be right by our side. And we'll invite the community as well, of course. Well, we'll take it to the community as well, how he has done in the past. I don't like Zoom, but that's all we have right now. So, thank you for coming. Any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of the February 1st work session and regular meeting. We have statements and checks, and the treasures report for January of 2022.
So move.
Motion Gerald Rowe?
Support Peterson.
Support Peterson to approve the consent agenda. Questions or comment? There was a few changes made to the minute. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five is the attorney's report. Mr. Winters, do you have any general legal update?
Madam Chair, just a couple of updates and maybe a couple observations I can share with the board. On a couple of the legal updates, the township full-time officials previously authorized our office to initiate two pedlock cases, and those, of course, are the result of the Washtenaw County Sheriff, a CAT team, and sometimes in conjunction with other outside law enforcement agencies, doing, having a search warrant approved by a judge to execute the search for narcotics as a result, more likely than not of drug dealing that has been going on at that residence or apartment for some time. One of those two cases that you'll see next week involved a four-unit apartment, apartment complex, apartment quad on Parkwood that was, which we received numerous complaints from neighbors, of people coming in, stopping for five minutes at a time at all hours of the day and night. That led to the investigation by the CAT team, and a subsequent search warrant was executed, and there was drugs, I think it was heroin cocaine, that was seized and has been turned over to the prosecuting attorney's office. The township initiated a civil public nuisance complaint, and a few days ago, and even last week, myself and my law partner, Dennis McLean, received a phone call from the attorney representing the owners of that four-unit apartment complex. And first and foremost, they actually, while they're out of town in terms of absentee-type landlords, they wanted to issue an apology to the township board for allowing this to get to the point where it did with the drug dealing. In fact, they agreed to a one-year pedlock themselves, and there's an order that will be entered to that effect, that will keep that unit pedlocked. At the same time, they also agree that they're going to actually sell their four-unit apartment complex. And the reason why I'm emphasizing this at this moment is that we talk about neighborhood stabilization, and we talk about the impact upon your neighbors, and we've all seen firsthand the impact it does have upon a neighborhood when you have a house that people refer to as being a, quote, "drug house," where there's a criminal activity afoot that goes on. And the township has at least reached the point where I believe right now that the attorneys are well, in this county, are very well familiar with the fact that the township and the CAT team and the township board are all rolling in the same direction when it comes to how we're going to handle drug houses, if the evidence supports that. And again, these are cases that have been vetted by the SWAT team in advance, the investigation, surveillance, et cetera. They've been presented to a judge for a search warrant. A search warrant's been duly executed, and a tabulation returned, narcotics seized and turned over to the Michigan State Police Crime Lab. So again, to Lieutenant Peltier and all the people that he oversees, especially, again, good things for a job well done. The other two observations that I want to share, it's more of a, you know, the impact upon township. We talk a lot about different things in regards to how to make our neighborhoods sometimes safer, and there's a lot of balancing that goes into trying to achieve that balance. But one incident has me totally baffled. And I'm not saying that, I mean, I'm totally baffled. There was a defendant here in Washtenaw County who committed a litany of crimes that started in the township and took him all the way over to Dexter. And these crimes included armed robbery, which is a life capital offense, unlawful imprisonment, has a lengthy criminal history, after forced the victim to drive around to local ATMs in attempt to get more money, went back and committed a home invasion, and the victim finally got away, and this defendant was apprehended. Now, okay, you might think that's where the story ends. Not really. So what happens is that the police department says, based upon the person's crimes that he's charged with, based upon the criminal history of the person that we're charged with, based upon any number of capital offenses, we would recommend that this person be denied bond. Prosecuing attorney, Mr. Savitt, also recommended a denial of pretrial release, for obvious reasons, right? Now, the magistrate, who again is not elected by anybody in this county, the magistrate, in spite of the, what I just read to you, and in spite of this being factual, not up for debate as to what happened in terms of what led to the arrest, says, "I'm going to release this person on personal recognizance and put a tether around his ankle." Okay? You know where this is going. So, the tether is cut off, and within two or three hours, Lieutenant Peltier and his team of deputies assigned to this district are chasing the same person who has committed, you want to say allegedly, so be it, a stabbing at Harvey Place, they respond to. And from there, he leaves to go and does another B and E that results into another search warrant. So, you tie up resources, you put people in harm's way, for what reason? If you have law enforcement that says, "We'd recommend no release on bond," and you have a prosecuting attorney that says, "We agree, denial of pretrial release," and you have a magistrate that says, "Okay, put a tether on your ankle, it gets cut off, let them go chase them down again, and if someone gets in the way and gets stabbed or another home-invaded," you know, this happened over here in the township. So, it's not, it's not, this is not the way it should be. This is not the way it should be. And it kind of also segues into this car crash that happened on East Michigan Avenue. And I'm still trying to get into the details of what happened with that car crash, because there was an innocent township resident and a family tonight grieving because that person was minding their own business coming out of a Key Bank on East Michigan Avenue while there is a person in a stolen vehicle fleeing and crashes into an innocent person coming out of a Key Bank location on Michigan Avenue. Don't know, we get different versions as to, knowing the car was stolen, I know that's why the pursuit was initiated anyways. At the same time, don't know that person was supposed to have reported to another court hearing in January that's still being investigated. It's, from my understanding, that's a strong possibility. My point is, right now, is that we have a lot of issues here, but when innocent people are at risk, and when at the same time, when you have people that are apprehended, when you have a pedlock case, when you have this, this is not about anything other than trying to at least hold, everybody needs to be held accountable. Needs to be held accountable. And there's a lot of things that can be done to improve the quality of life, to level the playing field. I heard Kirk Prophet, I grew up with Kirk, heard talk tonight. I know Debbie Swanson, trustees tied at Willerun. I'm a product of the Willerun Village. I went there all my entire life, went K-12 to Willerun Schools, grew up in this area my whole life. And I can see, and I know the value of education and the importance of leveling the playing field, but I also know the importance of having accountability. And that means that this township board continues to exercise oversight and to ensure accountability amongst the way in which the police services are being handled in this community. And again, that goes back to the Sheriff Clayton and his team, and everybody is really trying to do a great job with, in spite of some of these decisions or release on bond that make absolutely no sense. Now, you might say there was an isolated incident, but this same magistrate was also the one, if you recall before, released someone who had shot a six-year-old child last summer, and then they had to go to a higher court to appeal that decision to release that person. So, there's a pattern here that's happened on and on. At some point in time, when you talk about accountability, I think the county court system has to also, at some point in time, do some soul-searching as to whether or not these type of high, intense criminal cases should be handled by a magistrate who does not, I think, show a good judgment in releasing someone on a tether when they have committed this kind of litany of crimes from the eastern part of Washtenaw County to the western part. And again, I think all of this, some of these go out to the family of the person that was killed in the car chase down Michigan Avenue, because that was, it could have been any of us sitting here tonight or our family members. So again, there's a lot of things that are happening that are good, there are some things that just need to be talked about to a board, and this at this level, and this is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. I couldn't agree more. And we discuss it at the police meetings that we have every Monday, all these incidents, but this one was, it could have been prevented. You know, that's how you got to see, can you prevent someone else from being harmed? What can you do to control the violence? Investing in kids and having higher education and opportunities is important, but we have to hold people accountable. I agree 100%. And we have to, we should be able to go to the bank and pull out and not get killed from a fleeing vehicle or be held at gunpoint because someone let someone out. It's not fair, and I don't know exactly what we can do. I did have a conversation with Mr. Savitt, and he gave me some suggestions that I might, we might consider doing, because he too was upset about it. I didn't realize you could take it to circuit court, though. That's something I just learned, and we'll remember that in the future, but hopefully it won't happen in the future. We can't accept it. The next item on the agenda is old business, which is the second reading of Resolution 2022-03, Proposed Ordinance 2022-498 to amend and re-adopt the entire Township zoning ordinance and map. The first reading was held at the January 18th, 2022, regular meeting.
I have Resolution 2022-03, a resolution amending and re-adopting the entire Township zoning ordinance and map in reference to Ordinance Number 2022-498. Whereas the Township zoning ordinance must be updated from time to time to adapt to changing needs of the community or to comply with newly adopted legislation, whereas the Township zoning ordinance and map amendments implement the goals and objectives of the 2040 Ypsilanti Township Master Plan's Future Land Use Plan. Whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Commission has recommended amendments to the Charter Township of Ypsilanti zoning ordinance and map to update the entire zoning ordinance. Whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Commission held a public hearing pursuant to MCL 125.3306 on November 23rd, 2021. Whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Planning Commission recommended adoption on January 11th, 2022 to update the entire zoning ordinance and map via resolution of recommendation. Whereas the proposed amendments are consistent with the policies of the township. Whereas the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees has decided to adopt the entire Township zoning ordinance and map, now therefore be resolved that the Charter Township of Ypsilanti Board of Trustees hereby adopts the zoning ordinance and map, updating the entire zoning ordinance and map. I would so move the resolution.
Support?
Motion Gerald Rowe, supported by Trustee Wilson. And Jason, could you give an overview and perhaps address Mr. Arnold's issues that were raised in the public comment? And he'll have allow, you'll be allowed to speak again, of course.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Jason Icoangeli, the Township's Planning Director. This would be the second reading of the Township zoning ordinance. This reading, you know, our township chooses to have two readings of resolution, you know, in order to, part of the formal adoption process. To address Mr. Arnold's comments, the portion on South Harris where Mr. Arnold's building is located, he is correct. The building, probably in its form years ago, was probably an industrial building, and it probably was zoned industrial at one time. However, based on where it's at now in a neighborhood, that industrial zoning doesn't make a lot of sense. And so, for years now, that district has been local business, and the new zoning that will be in place for Mr. Arnold's property is neighborhood business, which is basically a name change. So, all of the uses that historically were in the B1 zoning district will still be there as well. So really, nothing changes. And Mr. Arnold didn't receive a letter like some of the other township property owners did, because we did send out letters to folks who were going to have a zoning change where the district was going to change in its entirety, including, you know, uses and things of that nature. Mr. Arnold's property changed only in name. All of the uses in that district pretty much remain the same. Some of them changed from permitted to special uses, but they all stayed, you know, uses listed in that district. So it's, they're basically comparable. I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks might have about the draft zoning ordinance as it's currently written. Again, I'd like to thank you for all of your time and the workshops and the efforts, the Township's Planning Commission, our consultants, the planning department staff, McLean and Winters, and everyone who, you know, has had a hand in this, the development team, the Township's Clerk's Office for being very helpful for scheduling all of the meetings and all of the notices that are required by state law. So this has been almost over a year's worth of time to go through this process and the legal proceedings involved, and the effort of Angela King and Denny McLean and Ben Carlisle, you know, putting in time to meet bi-weekly for months on end to rewrite the zoning ordinance. So it's a Herculean task, and it's almost at its culmination. And I think our community will be a much better place. It may not be tomorrow, and it might not be in five years, but 10 years from now, the changes that this zoning ordinance will implement will be impactful and change a lot of people's lives, because I'm a huge proponent of the broken window theory that they teach in planning school, where one broken window on a house can lead to, you know, folks in the neighborhood feeling that, you know, somehow days have passed of, you know, the neighborhood being vibrant and things kind of, you know, people always point to the broken window. They don't, you know, always point to the positive things. So, I think this ordinance will fix a lot of the broken windows in town, and people will start to see great things come of it. So, I'm pretty proud of the zoning ordinance as it's written. And will it need changes? Absolutely. It's a living document. It's meant to be changed, and there'll be changes that are needed. We might not have found them just yet, but they'll come. But as far as the product is today, I stand behind it and think it's a very good document and sound planning practice involved.
Jason, can you talk about some of the form-based zoning and the flexibility that it gives to help economic development?
So, the form-based zones are a new tool in the planning basket in the last 10 years. The zone, the form-based districts that this zoning ordinance will implement will be on Ekor's Road, East Michigan Avenue or Michigan Avenue, South Huron River Corridor, and Washtenaw Avenue. And basically, what a form-based district regulates uses by their form, not by sort of the land use. So it's based on sort of the building and the design and style and the size of the parcel that drives what uses can go into it. and the size of the parcel that drives what uses can go into it. So it takes less of an emphasis off of the what and, and kind of looks more at, you know, the function of what it's going to be. So it allows for mixed, mixed uses, which we haven't before. A good example of someone who's already going to benefit from this, there's a business owner on Washtenaw Avenue. Her name's Ann Lynn and she owns the old antique store. If you can remember the building that's at the corner of Washtenaw and-
Mall Bash.
Yes. You know, there was a gentleman over the years that had a store there, if you will, and it was very cluttered and had a history. And she owns that building now and she's just been waiting for this new mixed-use zoning so that she can do a live-work unit where they can live above the, the office below and, and have that flexibility where that didn't exist under the B3 zoning. It either had to be an office or a house. It couldn't be both. And that's not the world that we sort of live in today. People definitely work in their house. And so that's a prime example of someone who's been waiting patiently to get that flexibility to realize what that, that building can be. And if you ever drive past it, it's a stark departure from what it used to look like. It used to have ivy growing all over it and there was all sorts of odds and ends out front. And now it looks very, very different. And she's just waiting to basically be able to get with Mr. Bellers in the building office to get the plans in so that she can make that building work now with the new zoning ordinance improvement. So again, these new form-based codes, they look at on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So larger parcels allow for different uses than smaller ones, but the uses that are found in there are highly flexible where you're finding things like live-work, you know, offices on first floors, residential living on the second, or a mix of both residential and commercial development next door to each other. So someone could put in, you know, four attached single-family condo units, say on E Course Road and right next door. Could be a shopping center, you know, because those, those types of work, you know, developments work. People want to live close by to goods and services and that sort of that bygone era of automobile-oriented planning is sort of coming to an end because people don't want to have to drive 20 minutes to get a gallon of milk. They want to be right next door to it again. So people don't mind living in closer proximity to, to businesses and services. So this, this ordinance will achieve some of that too.
And from our previous public hearings, the rewrite of the ordinance also makes it easier for processes and simplifies-
It does.
Where a developer comes and they want to-
Yeah.
Or a owner wants to-
The new ordinance is extremely user-friendly where you had to almost have a degree to figure out, you know, what you might be able to do with your own residential property because you had to flip to five or six different sections of the ordinance. The way that this one's currently laid out is once you find the residential section, all of the applicable information that relates to a residential parcel is right there. And it also, you know, commercial and industrial, they're all laid out the same way. So you don't have to know that you have to go to a use table and then to a schedule of regulations table. All of that stuff's bundled into the, the various chapters, which are their own standalone sections of the ordinance. So for developers and our residents, it'll be much more of a user-friendly document where it's simplified and easy to use. And will answer, I'm sure, a lot of questions that, that people may have about zoning.
We, we actually have an agricultural zoning now, which we never had before since 1974, which is the original-
That's true. Yep. There's an agricultural overlay district now that extends extra benefits to people who have active farms in the community. So it allows them some additional rights that they didn't otherwise have under the old zoning ordinance to do things like provide retail or, you know, retail in a sense of like a farm stand or being able to have some small portion of their property set aside to be able to sell goods. It also allows for things like wineries and tasting rooms and, and farms that might have events. So like people who sell pumpkins or want to have corn mazes or things like that, there's, you know, provisions in that ordinance to allow those types of things on, on farm property. So it certainly not only protects our farms, it makes it more desirable for people to have agriculture, in which case then promotes and preserves agriculture into the future because now there's more of a benefit to having that. I mean, it's, a lot of farms today, you know, smaller farms, you know, can't compete with large agribusiness. People who are farming hundreds and hundreds of acres at a time, like on a monocrop like corn or soybeans. This is more related to small-time farmers, like the folks who own the winery on Stony, off of Stony Creek Road. This, this is a benefit to them to kind of nurture a farm or business that they have, or anyone who might have some sort of small farm where they grow pumpkins or corn or, or what have you. This is sort of geared towards the small, local farmer, someone who's doing it on 30 acres and not 300. And that's the kind of preservation that we, we need in our, our farm area, you know, parts of town.
And if we can just go back to Mr. Arnold. So it's very clear that we did not change his current zoning. It just is given a different name, but the same things that were allowed are still allowed.
Yes. And so the-
Mr. Arnold is saying no, but-
Well, some, the uses are all consistent. Some of them have changed from special, from permitted to special. Things like houses of worship, you know, that we had that change based on Ralupa that we went through where we had to make some changes to other institutional uses to make sure they're all on the same playing field. So some of the uses have changed in the district as far as permitted and special uses, but the, you know, the uses that were in that B1 district have just transitioned over to neighborhood business. That's another thing that the ordinance has done is it's changed the nomenclature to get away from all of the real B1, B2, B3 that people might not understand. And it's reclassified them as local business, neighborhood business, regional business, so that people kind of have an idea when you say that, what, what, what does that actually mean? Like the multiple family districts used to be RM1, RM2, RM3. Now they're low density, medium density and high density. So you can kind of, just by the name alone, kind of envision what, what that means. One, two, three, four-story buildings as they, they kind of go up through the scale. So-
And does this match the master plan that we spent almost two years?
It does. Yeah. So I mean, this, this process is the, sort of the culmination of the master planning process. This takes the future land use map and then puts it into law. Basically it, it puts it on the map, you know, the zoning map and, and makes it binding. So yeah, it, it is the, this will sort of perpetuate that vision that's in the 2040 master plan through this, this zoning ordinance. I appreciate all the questions you asked, Brenda. That was a good, a good way to prompt me to, to touch on the high notes of the, the zoning ordinance. So I thank you for that.
Mr. Arnold, if you'd like to speak at this time and continue with your speech?
First of all, Jason and I get along great. I don't know where he went. Oh, there you are. I like him. He's been very helpful to me. And, and I-
Good.
And I appreciate that. I guess relative to what Jason said, I'd just draw your attention to the handout that Fletcher from Planning sent over to me in terms of a contrast between B1 permitted uses and special use permits. And I can tell you that from the standpoint of interacting with the public, when they're looking for commercial property and you're looking to try to understand what somebody wants to, what their needs are, and where is their property that is suitably zoned to allow that particular usage? And you're hoping to find that. And then you throw in the whole discussion about, well, this is allowed with a special use permit. Oh, what's that mean? Oh, you got to go before the Planning Commission. Well, that just throws another curveball out there for anybody who's looking at doing something business-wise to have to deal with. Not insurmountable, but I can tell you that from the standpoint of people that I interact with on a daily basis, that they don't want to go there. They don't want to have to deal with stuff like that. So to say that we've moved these allowed uses that were permitted uses within the B district, B1 district, and now to say, oh, well, they're allowed as a special use basis, my reaction to that is you just made it a lot tougher. Imagine for a moment if you owned a property and let's just say it was a gas station. And it's been a gas station for 10 years, 15 years. And along comes a municipality and they said, well, we've got this master plan and we're not going to allow gas stations there anymore, but we're going to let you be a restaurant. And that's kind of what I feel like has happened here. In the totality of the plan that the township has put together, I'm sure it's a fine plan. In the specific geographic area that I'm talking about, it's like a shoe that doesn't fit. As I was starting to say, when, when I was talking, and I, and I don't want to get into any repetition of what I've already said. If you drove by the buildings and there's only six addresses in the section between Parkview and Russell, it's not like it's a big area. And I gave you a list with the parcel ID numbers here. I gave you an aerial view. I put the house or the street numbers for each of these six properties, their parcel ID numbers, the size of the buildings. These are large buildings. Then you look at the types of uses that are being permitted there. It's a shoe that in my opinion doesn't fit. I think it's fair to say that if people drove by these buildings and you said, what did you see? I saw a warehouse. I saw an industrial property. I didn't see a restaurant location. I didn't see a storefront. These are buildings that are suitable for uses allowed in a light industrial district. I realize it's a small area. I realize it's got houses around it, but these buildings were there and they were permitted for light industrial use. And then the master plan got changed and the zoning got changed and we got the situation that exists today.
Mr. Arnold, may I ask, what, what are you currently using it for?
Well, in terms of my particular use, I got a, a lot of vacant space.
So you're not-
I can't, I can't, I've been 10 years trying to get tenants in there. And it's, I'm, I'm saying to you-
Was it a church previously?
No. But I have had people talk to me about, I've had a number of people talking to me about leasing space there for a church purpose. And I note in the, the new zoning district, from, it was allowed in the B1, now it's changed to what we have in NB. Not that I have an axe to grind on that. I'm simply, that's an observation of, that's indicative of what I'm talking about. So moving on, this proposed area is located in an opportunity zone, a designation that I trust you know was, was created to encourage economic growth in areas that would benefit the community. I can tell you as a certified commercial investment manager, I do market analysis calculations. We do location analysis. We evaluate a potential market location for economic development. And the calculation begins with population, income, demographics, traffic counts, all of which we use in formulas to determine what the consumer spending is in a given market area for particular products or services. We perform these economic calculations to ascertain what dollars are being spent in that area for given products or services. Not much more. And these calculations start with people. They start with jobs in a community. When a community isn't creating jobs, economic growth suffers. Investors are not going to spend their investment dollars to create new jobs in a community or in an area on Harris Road that makes it hard to conduct business, regardless of whether the property is in an opportunity zone or not. I know you're close to passing the proposed zoning changes. I wish I had known about this sooner. I wish I had an opportunity to express my concerns to you sooner, but I wasn't aware of it. But it's not too late. I trust that there is a reason you've provided property owners an opportunity to appear before you tonight. I think the reason is you want to make sure that you are making a change that will positively impact on the community, the whole community, not just areas of the community and leave pockets out. So I ask you the same line that Dirty Harry used many years ago. Are you feeling lucky? Lucky about the proposed change to NB in this section of town? No offense, men, but if you continue down the path that you're considering and classify this section of Harris Road as NB, every commercial property owner will need luck to be prosperous, given the economic stranglehold that these zoning classifications impose on light industrial properties. This is an opportunity to fix that. And I've been trying for 10 years to deal with it. I'm just telling you, it's, it's really a challenge. And I'm in the business. And I'm not a guy that, you know, I'm, I'm trying to make things work in terms of what the township wants. I'm just saying to you, this is not a fit. And I, I thank you for the, the board, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight and to consider the, the concerns that I've expressed.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Mr. Winters?
Mr. Arnold, I, I just want to make a clarification. Is this the property that we did a Class A non-conforming use on?
Yes, it is.
And the, and the reason why I ask that question is that for the board's benefit is that I think that Mr. Arnold has indicated that this property was back many, many years. And in fact, I remember working a lot of hours and getting this property in a position for you to-
I should have mentioned this.
The Class A non-conforming use, which gave you a lot more, a lot more, a lot more flexibility even before this zoning ordinance was changed.
Absolutely.
This may have been the former Michigan Tube Benders.
And you know, even with everything that was done, the fact of the matter is that that Class A non-conforming use permit, which opened up the ability to do certain industrial things, there was maybe about 10 or so. Faced with the circumstances that I have today.
And I was just, I was just trying to inform the board-
And I appreciated what you did. I should have mentioned it.
We tried to, even before Jason was here long ago, we tried to look at this, this corridor and give you the opportunity to make it more of the uses that you, in fact, that non-conforming use, I believe, is still-
I thought I could make it fly. Yeah.
I think it's still in effect. I think it's still-
It's been 10 years.
I think it's still valid for that purpose. So I think that-
Yeah, I would be totally sunk without it. I can tell you right now.
It's, it's still in place. I just wanted-
I don't know about the other pieces, businesses along that strip. I don't know whether they have something like that, but oh my gosh, it's tough with it.
I just wanted the board to be aware that there is a Class A non-conforming designation on this property.
So he's with it. Okay. Thank you. All right. We have a motion and support to approve the resolution, which is a second reading for the proposed ordinance to amend and re-adopt the entire Township zoning ordinance and map. All in favor? Oh, it's a roll call vote because we're doing an actual ordinance. So I apologize. Wilson?
Yes.
Eldridge?
Yes.
Stumble votes, yes. Roe?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
The second reading is adopted. Great job, Jason and team. And under New Business, we have a request to approve an amendment to the YCUA Articles of Incorporation regarding compensation for the YCUA Board of Commissioners. For purposes of discussion, can we have the motion?
So move.
So move.
For.
Motion, Row, support Eldridge. Mr. Blackburn, our YCUA director.
Good evening, Supervisor Stumbo and members of the board. Tonight's agenda item addresses YCUA's Articles of Incorporation, specifically Article Number Seven. Article Number Seven covers the compensation that is provided to YCUA Board Commissioners, and it sets that compensation at $50 per meeting attended and limits that to $50, or excuse me, 12 meetings per year. The proposed resolution, which was adopted by the YCUA Board of Commissioners on January 26th, proposes an amendment, or a revision, so to speak, to that article and replaces it with, excuse me, the ability for the YCUA Board to set compensation, provided that the YCUA Board, the majority of the board approves that resolution, and also that it is approved by the Ypsilanti Township Board and the City Council of Ypsilanti. And I welcome any questions in regards to...
Other questions? I did notice that Commissioner Keith Jason voted no. Is that correct?
I do not believe, I believe that's on the next agenda.
On the next, okay. But it affects us, right? Or no?
I, I think...
Does this just change the Articles of Incorporation, which is when the city and the township formed YCUA, which is our utility company? And this allows a compensation for the Yucka Board members that were $50 at the time? And it's been that way, right?
Absolutely. This is proposing essentially a replacement of Article Seven, just Article Seven, which covers the $50 stipend that's paid to the commissioners. So the only thing this really does is it takes away the need for any further changes for stipends paid to commissioners so that we don't actually have to file it with the county clerk, with the Secretary of State. It just decouples that change so that the articles don't have to be revised if, say, a year from now or five years from now, we decide to make a compensation change and the board recommends that, and it's approved by this legislative body along with City Council, that we don't also have to go through the further process. That's really the only...
Change to the Articles...
Change to this article under this agenda item.
Other questions are coming?
So this doesn't add any, oh, this doesn't add any additional meetings? There's still, there still will be 12?
Absolutely not. This just basically puts the authority to set compensation instead of being governed directly in the Articles of Incorporation. It allows the YCUA Board to essentially set that compensation by a majority of the commissioners approving it, and then taking that compensation that is set to this legislative body along with City Council. But it makes no statement in regards to limitation of meetings, and I think that's going to be covered definitely in the next agenda item.
Did that answer your question, Newman?
Yes, yes.
Are there any other questions? Did the city vote on this yet?
They did not.
They have not?
So just, so if it's okay, this was the, an original version of this resolution was taken to City Council back in January and was voted down. And the main point that I took from, from the City Council at that time was not a concern about the compensation, was not a concern about anything to do with the approval, other than they wanted to keep that approval. They did not want to, the original resolution basically took it and allowed the YCUA Board to set that compensation by a supermajority, essentially.
And then it goes to the city and the township, kind of similar to the rates, right?
The original resolution did not. The original resolution that was proposed back in November allowed the YCUA Board to set that compensation. So this resolution is different in that regard. The mechanism to come back to this body along with City Council is still in place. Basically, the only thing this changes is they need to file the change with Secretary of State.
Okay. Mr. Winters, have you reviewed the...
Yes, I have reviewed it, I think what, it's Luther, right?
Yes.
Yeah, what you're saying is true. The first proposal I saw was one that would have given the Yucka Board itself the authority to set the compensation. This one has changed. I'm not really sure the changes, it still requires us to come back to Township Board and City Council, it sounds like, except you just don't have to file with the article, the amended article with the Secretary of State, I think is what you're saying was, is the difference, I think. So it's up to the board to decide, you know. I am kind of curious, is the City Council going to be considering it this month or next month?
So the plan is, depending on the vote here, because there's a, basically the next agenda item is a contingent item, would be if the, if the township approves it, would be to take it to City Council, essentially since it's already been taken there once.
So the Articles of Incorporation currently says $50 per meeting?
Correct.
And it's been that way since 1974?
Correct.
And we increase the compensation of every other board and commission to $75, five years ago, maybe? So this allows the flexibility to make a recommendation to the city and the township to change compensation?
Absolutely.
So we have a mo...
What happens if there's, so the City Council and the Township both have to agree? I know it's the next thing we're gonna, but there has to be agreement amongst the two for an increase, for that to take place. As I understood it, this just says, once this change happens, it won't be held in that article, or it won't be held in this, whatever this is called.
It's essentially our founding documents.
Right. It won't be, they won't have to do both. They won't have to come back and change this and do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm explaining it correctly, but it essentially, I'll call it the mechanism. The mechanism currently exists in those founding documents, and there's a more substantial process to change those founding documents. So really, the only change here is to, the legislative approvals will absolutely be the same. It will have to be approved by a majority of the YCUA Board to even come to this legislative body and/or City Council for approval. It just stops the subsequent processes.
Madam Chair? It's not and/or, it's like both of them. It's in the language, it says, approved by the City Council of the City of Ypsilanti and by the township. So it's both.
Correct.
Like the sewer rate or water rate.
Absolutely.
Can the order be changed? Right now, it's YPSI Township and then the City Council. Can it ever be City Council and then YPSI Township, or is there a set order?
There is not a set order established. It was more timing.
Okay.
The city had the first version in early January, and they voted it down, so it didn't need to come here because both entities have to approve the changes.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So we have a motion...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just ask Luke if, I don't know if he said it, I don't think he said it, but can you just give them some highlights? How long that $50 has been effect at the Yucka Board?
1974.
I think it was 1974.
Four.
Four, correct. It's never been changed.
Never been changed. So I just wanted the board to know that.
Yep.
And thank you.
All right, we have a motion, support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number three is request to approve a memory and understanding, oh no, I'm sorry, request to approve a stipend amount for the Yucka Board of Commissioners.
So move.
For.
Motion, Gerald Row, support Eldridge to change the stipend from $50 to $75 per meeting.
Correct.
Questions or comment? I did, I'm just curious, is Mr. Jason, Keith Jason voted no?
So Commissioner Jason's concern on this item, to the best of my knowledge, really centered around the new, the motion that was made sets the stipend at $75 per meeting. So typically, YCUA Board meets once per month, and that's typically how the $50 is paid to those commissioners. This would provide that the water bill hearings that we have, we have typically an annual finance committee, which can go multiple hours, a personnel committee that is typically held maybe once or twice a year, where commissioners are in attendance for sometimes a significant period of time, would be paid also $75 for those meetings.
That was currently allowed in the current Articles of Incorporation?
So the Articles of Incorporation currently under Article Seven limits that to 12 meetings per year. So this would be any meeting that, essentially that formal meeting that we hold with the YCUA Board.
So this could actually wind up to be more than 12 meetings a year?
Absolut, absolutely, yes. And that's, and it's, it is clarified, this, it no longer limits it to 12 meetings per year. So for example, we have one, typically one YCUA Board member for the city and one YCUA Board member for the township that may sit on, I would say, it's been a while since I've looked at it, we're not doing water shut offs right now, but maybe three or four a year. And sometimes those hearings are, can be half a day to a whole day long. So under the existing system, they're not compensated for that service, yet that is a requirement of that service. So this would then continue to pay them for the $75 per meeting that they attend each month. And that's, that's, unless there's a special meeting, that's all we ever typically have. But it would also pay them for those handful of meetings that they may have for water bill hearings. For example, this Friday, we have a finance committee hearing where we're going to be meeting with our auditors, and we will have two YCUA Board members participate in that finance meeting, which may go multiple hours. So it's, I, to the best of my knowledge, historically, these are just a handful of extra meetings per year. But typically, the requirements and duties of those committees can last for quite a few hours on those days.
Questions are coming?
Yeah, and this is just a curious question. Do you, do you feel this will encourage more participation?
In my experience...
You're from the committee?
In my experience, the YCUA Board members have always been extraordinary in their service. They always go above and beyond and are very helpful. I don't think this compensates them for the amount of time they put in, but I think it makes it closer to being appropriate. I know most of them serve for the public good and not for compensation. I don't think a $75 compensation for a handful of meetings a year is very substantial, but I think it's a, it's a requirement of that service and appears to be fitting.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions are coming?
So I guess, I'm just looking, and it looks like it clarifies what the other meetings would be, because it says therefore the finance committee meetings and/or the water...
Can you speak into the microphone? I'm sorry.
So I'm reading that it says that, it doesn't limit it to 12, but it does say that there would be for the finance committee meetings and the water bill hearings, oh, personnel too, personnel and finance committee meetings. So I guess that would be my concern if it was open-ended, what would the potential meetings be where that 75 would be paid? I mean, I could see where that would be important. Is that limited to what's been spelled out there? Are we thinking that there'd be other meetings where, because usually clarity is the most important thing? So if this is what we're expecting people to do, I'm not even saying I have a problem with those things that are outlined, but if the other things could become, I think it would just be better to say these are the meetings that we're talking about.
And those are currently, those are the only committees, or committees that YCUA Board members sit on and are requested to attend. So there is no other, there is no other current meetings or groups where YCUA Board members, and that's not really the mechanism that would be in place to pay them just for attending any meeting. It would be these committees that they're actually appointed to as a requirement of a YCUA Board member.
So it's limited to those committees?
I would say it's limited to those two committees, because that's the only ones we have unless, and, please don't quote me on this one, I think if we created a new committee, it would actually have to be approved by the YCUA Board. So that's not, that we're, these are not internal community committees to YCUA. We have a number of groups and meetings where YCUA Board Commissioners do not serve on. But right now, the only committees are the Personnel Committee, the Finance Committee, that YCUA again, Commissioners serve on. And then Water Bill Hearings, it's not really a committee. Yeah, that's one city representative from the board and one township representative. When there is a contested water bill, they will sit in on those hearings with typically our finance director and usually one of our representatives from the Water Department, the water, from our service center.
And I hope I didn't miss it, but the reason you said Keith Jason didn't, didn't vote yes on this was because, simply put...
To the best of my knowledge, the main reason why Commissioner Jason did not vote for this was he felt that it should be limited to the 12 meetings per year. So the extension of this $75 stipend to those other three purposes, he did not support.
Can you explain the last part there about no longer explicitly provides for the Board of Commissioners to set compensation for the secretary, treasurer, and/or provide reimbursement of expenditures? Can you tell us, I don't know if you talked about that, could you tell us?
Yeah, sorry about that. The existing language in the Article, in Article Number Seven provides that the board can set a separate stipend for the secretary or chair, and/or it also includes reimbursable expenses. There's nothing that limits the board to set that now, it's just not explicit. And in my experience, typically, YCUA Board Commissioners never request reimbursable expenses. Typically, it's a short travel to a YCUA Board meeting. There's not a lot of resources needed to serve on that board. We provide laptops and the material to those, to the Commissioners at those meetings. So it's never been utilized. Again, it doesn't restrict the board from making that recommendation and approval in the future, but it no longer explicitly spells it out.
I trust the people who serve on the board. They're not going to make us, people don't make, I think appointments to boards and commissions are voluntary, and I think it's fair to move them to $75. And I know there's not that many hearings for the water, the bills, and for personnel and for financial. There's not that many meetings that are held.
Sometimes a Personnel Committee may not meet through the whole year. It's usually, I think, for example, they may have met one time when they, for my hiring for an executive director position in certain matters, but they're intermittent and definitely not routine. And the Finance Committee typically meets once per year to review the financial statements for the authority from the audit.
And the different city representatives and township representatives, they're not on all three of them?
No.
Any other questions are coming? Hearing none, we have a motion and support to approve, is that correct? I didn't write down who. Gerald Row and Eldridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sure I sustain from voting.
Oh, because you're financially benefited, it's...
That's right.
It's true.
I could vote on the language, but not on the money part.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
So trustee Peterson is requesting to abstain. Does anyone have any objections to that? No. All right. So...
Thank you.
Six approvals and one abstention. Could you please just kind of update us on the Snow Road sanitary...
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
So Sunday, this past Sunday morning, we had a significant collapse of a 24-inch sanitary sewer within essentially the footprint of our Snow Road pump stations. For the YCUA system, we have essentially four major pump stations, and this is one of those four. That sewer was found to be collapsed and completely compromised, which no longer allows us to pump flow from one of those other major stations. us to pump flow from one of those other major stations to the Snow Road. So, immediately, we had to move into diversion of some flow, which is limited, and engagement of contractor to come in and do bypass pumping for YC way. We don't have the ability to bypass that capacity of flow from that station. So, as of right now, the, we have around six bypass pumps that are in place. We have diversion of some flow, so they're, the, the YC way team worked Sunday all day, did a phenomenal job in, in adverse weather conditions and around the clock to get pretty much everything in place, but regrettably, around midnight on Sunday, going into Monday morning, the sewage level at our, what we call our March Road pump station, because that ability was compromised, that level had got too high. We were not keeping up with the bypass pumping, so we did have to release some sewage to the Huron River at that location. That ceased around seven AM on Monday morning, as we installed, diverted more flow and installed more bypass pumping. As of right now, we, the bypass pumping is basically the same. We've had no more releases of sewage. We have, we're engaged a excavation contractor to begin work, and actually, today, this afternoon, they were drilling wells to perform the de-watering for the excavation to make those repairs.
Where was the actual break? Was it a break in the sewer pipe, or was it the pump?
No, the pump wasn't compromised, the actual sewer collapsed. So, there's a, a pretty major sinkhole within that footprint of that pump station.
On Snow Road or March Road?
Snow Road, but that's the March Road line.
Okay.
So, the March sewer that goes to Snow Road...
Okay.
Is not there. It is completely collapsed.
This was authorized to go out for bonding and bids were out, and where are we at with...
So, so, regrettably, this may not have been avoided, but could, could have been substantially reduced, you know, had this repair or parallel sewer been in place. So, I believe bids come back within a week or two. We've already, the, the contractor that was doing the tree clearance was supposed to be on site Monday already, so that portion of the project was already moving forward. But we fully plan to have a contractor engaged, and that project's moving forward for construction this summer for a parallel sewer along this line.
Was it, pardon me if I'm wrong, was it bid out previously and the bids came in? It was like three million, is, was it projected and came in at six million? Or was this not the...
That was before me, I, I'm not a hundred percent positive, to be honest. I think that was the switchgear. I'm almost sure that was on the switchgear. I don't believe this was previously bid out, but I'm not, I wasn't at YC way at the time, so I'm not a hundred percent positive.
So, Yucka came last year and gave a presentation on that line, and the board authorized going out for bid, and we're still not out. We haven't awarded the project yet, is that correct? Not we, Yucka.
No, the bids have not came back yet. So, the bids are due back, don't quote me on the date, it's about a week or two from now. So, we, we fully intend to bring that recommendation to the YC way board in March for a construction contract.
So, how do you repair the failed system?
So, we will excavate and install a new sewer for that hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty-foot section that's compromised. We have to.
Right, and it's from the pump station at Snow Road heading back south?
It, it's within the fence line of the Snow Road pump station. If I had an aerial, it'd be really great to show you, but I don't. It's from the first manhole that's within the, the footprint. It's between that and what's called an influent junction chamber. So, that twenty-four inch sewer between there is what collapsed.
So, the one that was underneath the river?
No.
Did not?
Correct, no.
Okay, thank you, Jesus.
And we believe that sewer is in good shape. There's actually a section of sewer that was not lined back in the early two thousands, but the sewer underneath the river was lined. So, the, the, the main purpose of the parallel sewer is not so much a, a concern over the condition of that specific sewer. It has a lot to do with the capacity of that sewer. It's an odd design, I, well, before my time, but you have a forty-inch, forty-two inch sewer dumping into a twenty-four inch sewer, which, under the river, is just not a, not a very good design.
So, it wasn't a capacity issue?
This was not a capacity issue. This was a complete failure of that pipe, is what we believe. And we haven't excavated, and, and we'll take, you know, samples and, and definitely evaluate the, the why it collapsed, but I mean, we, of course, we have good feeling.
Yeah, huh. I wonder what could cause that, frozen weather, or...
No, most of the time, with, with this type of collapse, it's actually due to hydrogen sulfide. So, it actually corrodes in, in that headspace of the sewer. It corrodes the concrete, actually turns it to gypsum, so it looks like paste. So, it definitely, the hydrogen sulfide concentrations in these sewers have been high for years, and we've struggled with it, which is why some of those sewers were lined back in the two thousands. But for whatever reason, I don't know, this specific sewer that failed was not lined, and I don't, I don't know why.
You don't?
Yeah.
So, ma'am chair, I did see the email, I don't know if I read it, all of it, but that just happened not too long ago. So, it didn't affect other homes in that area, did it? I think you caught it in time, is that correct?
Augusta, I think.
Are we talking about twenty-nine, we're talking about the one that just happened?
Yes.
So, we do believe there is a couple homes that were impacted by, by this incident, yes.
So, March Road area, or...
It's, they're not, they're in Augusta Township. I don't have the specific customers, but yes, I do, am aware of two specific customers, I believe along Button, that were most likely impacted from this sewer. There's some unusual conditions. I mean, we do feel that the level at the, the March Road pump station had been much higher. We call it a hydraulic grade line, had been much higher in the past and not resulted in backups. So, there, we definitely want to do some further engineering and evaluation of why this happened like this. We were following the best practices we had in the past, but, you know, regrettably...
Again, it could have been more major than this, is that correct?
I absolutely think, and I was out there most of the day with the staff, I think the YC way team did a phenomenal job. There wasn't anyone that we tried to get ahold of that didn't show up and, and work in the snow. I mean, it was less than ten degrees outside, they set up hallpipes.
What I'm saying, if, if you didn't catch it, would it affect other homes? That's what I'm saying.
Oh, had we not done anything, yes, yeah.
Without a doubt, it would have, if you guys didn't catch it in time, tried to repair, what have you had to do?
Yes.
It would affect more homes in that area, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, sorry, yep, yes.
Good job, Yucka.
So, do we, do I understand it to mean that even though it was, it was a good job, was there still a release when you said from twelve AM to seven AM of sewer in the seven hours worth of sewer release in the Huron River?
Correct. So, we originally found it at seven AM on Sunday, or, excuse me, around four AM on Sunday morning.
Okay.
But the sewage release did not happen. We were able to contain, based upon the amount of flow, we were able to shut that station off and retain it and set up some bypass pumping, but the full bypass pumping arrangement was not in place. Around midnight, basically, we were put in a, a very precarious position to either turn on that Mon, March Road pump station and release sewage to the environment, or continue to back up more homes. Typically, the hierarchy for us is we don't want to lose homes, absolutely.
You said parallel, it, it was, it is parallel, and it's going to be parallel. It wasn't like we're doing parallel to replace or because you're going to use one instead of another. It's going to be parallel even when it's repaired and the other work's done that we're bonding?
Absolutely, then, there would be a new parallel sewer to the existing one, which will address any capacity issues and also give us the ability to do more inspections and service of the sewers when we need to take one out of service and actually do televising of the sewer. These are the types of activities we do to hopefully catch these types of situation before there's a catastrophic failure, but it's really difficult to televise a sewer when it basically needs to be in service most of the time. So, this new sewer will give us the ability to televise the existing sewer that goes under the river and take it out of service and inspect it and make necessary repairs. Correct, we, the plan is to use them both in parallel, absolutely.
Good job.
This had nothing to do with the parallel sewer, because it was not a capacity issue?
This was not, yeah.
It was a failure in one of the pipes that was near the pump station on Snow Road, is that...
That's absolutely correct. The only, the only clarification, had this sewer been in place, then it would have significantly mitigated the situation, because we'd had another sewer to go to.
Not a capacity issue?
Not a capacity issue.
Well, Luke, welcome as a director, and I'm sorry this occurred on your watch, but I know that, and so often, we do not thank our utility workers enough, because they're frontline workers as well, and day in and day out, regardless of the weather, like our postal workers, our nurses, our medical, police, fire, but so many times, we don't recognize how important our utility workers are, and we know, because we see them all the time and all hours of the night and day working, so we appreciate everything that you guys did do to try to prevent, you know, the, the two homes that did back up, and, I mean, I don't know how you could have prevented what just occurred, because that happens, and it does happen, and I'm sorry that it happened in our community, and I'm sorry that it went into the Huron River. But you're doing a...
They, the, the team does a great job.
Yeah, they do do a great job, and they're very, they're very kind to our residents too, when they're talking to them and explaining things, so I just want to give our thanks for that as well. Thank you for the update. Number three is a request to approve a memorandum of understanding between Washoe County Water Resource Commissioner and Ipsy Township for community area cleanup. There's a motion, Eldridge, support trustee Wilson to approve the second year of doing a community area cleanup, and it's where our wonderful Washoe County Resource Commissioner staffs and locates a, what do you call it, bin, or, I call it a bin, what is it? A large...
Dumpster?
Trash receptacle one, bin, I don't, I don't know, but they're very large, and it's going to be on our property of Ford Boulevard, or our fire station is where they had it last year, and the community for free can come and bring their excess rubbish or furniture, whatever they have, to, and bring it to the dumpster. So, that's the name of it, dumpster. And, so, this is just approved, and it's been reviewed by the township attorney, and everything is in proper form. Is there any questions are coming? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. There's no other business to come before the board? Are there any board member updates?
I have a mother chair, um, ma'am chair, and mother chair. Just one thing, got an invitation to all the board members, invite to the New Labor Organization partnering with Eastern Michigan University. It will be their first labor education conference, February twenty-four to the twenty-seventh at the Ipsy Lanning Marriott. All invited.
Thank you. Are there comments or updates?
Yes, just to say that myself and trustee Wilson went to the, my brother's keeper seminar, and it was very enlightening, and, and it gave me a chance, because I, I, that was my first outing, per se. So, it gave me a chance to really get an idea as to what's going on in the community and, and what's happening with our younger people, and how we can, you know, address those needs that they were talking about in the presentation earlier. Very enlightening.
I have.
I just wanted to say, I want to say thank you to the staff that have been preparing the bags to be delivered to the homes. I know they've been turning them around as soon as we're getting them out, making sure that they're available so that we can deliver them in the community, so I really appreciate. I know there's a lot of work that's gone behind the scenes to have those ready, and the delivery of test kits into the community, because you can see, as soon as we go into a neighborhood, people are calling and they're asking for the kits, and those are being delivered pretty much within two days or less usually of getting there. So, that takes a lot for the staff to be able to get it to that place. The other thing is that we attended a meeting, super supervisor Stumbo and I were trying to get some professors from Eastern and their students to actually do some work looking at internet speeds and quality on the eastern side of the county. There's a lot of assumptions that we have high-quality internet that's accessible and that it's reliable, and that isn't necessarily, we don't know that to be true. So, there are some Eastern professors that are looking into doing some projects with students where they're going to be looking at that, and so that's exciting to know that we'll have some data to know whether that is accurate, that we have reliable, accessible internet at the speeds that they say they're supposed to have on the eastern side of the county and many of the opportunity zones that we saw tonight.
Thank you.
Ma'am chair, let me just clear up mine. It's, it's not too, of course, you contend this conference, but it's just a meet and greet. If you come to the first stages of the conference, there'd be, my understanding, two-hundred-and-fifty people attending, union and non-union. I don't know if trustee Wilson wants to speak on it, if the UAW, because I understand there's going to be two. I think there's one in La Bona the week before, but I'm just asking to relay a message from a resident that they invited.
Okay.
So, it's up to you if you'd like to attend, thank you.
Sure, ma'am, ma'am chair. I, I wasn't, but since trustee Peterson did bring it up, University of Michigan Center for Labor and Community Studies, that used to be located here in Ann Arbor, now in Dearborn, they'll have a Black Men in Union Conference out in Troy, and this is to promote more minorities getting involved in the unions. I think any union can actually attend the conference, not just UAW. It is normally heavily UAW, though, and actually, there's a, there's different classes that you can take, and one of the classes is civic engagement, where I actually will be one of the instructors in that class, which starts this Friday through Sunday. And then, like trustee Peterson also mentioned, there's a new conference that has started, the African-American Union Leadership Conference, which she mentioned next week. I believe it's the Thursday evening is when some of the elected officials in the area will be present at seven PM also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, just a brief update, I guess, we opened, or had a bid opening last week for our web content, RFP that went out, and we received two bids back on that, and then one for our website design, which we received twelve bids on, and, so that was a, a great, you know, turnout for the web design one. And I just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow is the rescheduled needs assessment public comment for Washoe County Urban, whatever the title is.
CBDG.
CBDG, thank you. And so, I can reshare that back out if everyone would like to. I don't remember what that is that I wrote there, and then we also had our election bag certified today, where, you know, we worked in partnership with other municipalities and collaborated with the county, because our, you know, township does that and believes it's important, so Mylan, Sio, Webster, and Linden Township were able to come to our civic center here as well to have their bags certified by the county. That's all.
All right. Just for, since the last meeting, an update. I did contact On the Ground News in order to do an article on your bonds, please, on Harris Road, and the, she's a wonderful woman and had a tragedy and has just turned giving to the community to the highest level I've seen in, in many, many, many years. So, they're going to do an article on it, so if you all, you know, have ideas about news articles, let's contact and get the positive, good news out, so that'll be upcoming. We also, at the Planning Commission, they approved Project Yoga, which is Amazon, for preliminary and site approval, and that was at the Planning Commission level, and supposed to create over two-hundred jobs, seventeen to twenty dollars an hour with health benefits, and that is on textile road. They did a very extensive traffic impact study. They did a very extensive traffic impact study to make sure that things flow. I didn't know they did this, but they actually have the semis come in, in hours that no one uses the road, like 4:00 AM to, it's a very odd time, but they analyze the traffic and try to avoid any interaction with like rush hour and stuff. So as we get more information, you know, we'll let everyone know about that. We also had a meeting with, we didn't have a meeting with Amazon, but we had a meeting with Hercules Concrete, which is a new business that's coming into State Street area by YCUA, and they're a concrete mixing company. And they were actually, was looking to hire 60 employees eventually. They needed 30 with the abilities, I think they call it CDL for the larger trucks, and we were able to connect them, because they wanted to do job fairs and really connect to people locally and lift people up with good jobs. They are union jobs and good healthcare. And we connected them with Mr. Ups from Michigan Works in order to, because ironically, he had people, six people who actually had the license that are necessary to work there, but by connecting them, we were, we were able to help get them jobs. A lot of times, like at the road commission, you know, for the big truck drivers, they require two years' experience. Well, you can't get experience and, you know, until, but they don't require two years' experience. They will actually train and want to be very vested in part of the community in Ipsilanti Township. Heather spoke about the community development block grant dollars, that'll come back to this board, but we were getting park equipment upgrades, because we originally did them with CBDG when trustee Swanson was on the board, and so they were going to do Washaw Avenue, but that's been delayed because MDOT's going to do sidewalk total reconstruction on Washaw Avenue, so we're going to take those dollars and, if the board agrees, and move it to park replacement. The underground printing that's currently in Ann Arbor has actually bought the Bozell Building in Ipsy Township, and they're going to be having, so that's kind of exciting. They met with the building department and the fire department to get all their plans approved and make sure it's safe and whatnot, but I think that's good news as well. We met with the Children's Healing Center, which is, they have one in Grand Rapids currently. They want to locate one in Ipsilanti Township, and it's children with cancer who can have a place to come, and it's a clean environment, and at least people, the kids can get together and their families can be there as well and interact in a very safe, clean environment, which is necessary when you're going through treatment as a child. So we're working with them to try to help find a location for that. I attended the first local units of government. It's going to be a monthly meeting hosted by county administrator Dill, as well as there were several county commissioners in there. There was a presentation by county public health and climate change, and, which is very important, and county health did not mention the fact that they were going to lift the miss, the mask mandate in schools at that meeting, but the climate change, you know, they're moving forward with a lot of dollars to, you know, change the efficiency and make it more environmental friendly on a lot of the things, specifically it's called out in Ann Arbor and Washaw County. So the only thing I did ask is that we prioritize and change the climate of our people and the opportunity index and focus on them and invest some money there first. We can do both, but we must change the climate of the people and the conditions that people have to try to survive on. We go door to door and they don't even have heat. They don't have water. There's a lot of needs that we can, we need to focus on. So I mentioned that at the meeting. It's supposed to happen every month, so I'll keep you updated. We met with the Westwell Road Traffic Committee, Stan and I did, just on, there's 400, $450,000 that we can start going back and looking at some of the things that we want to complete that were cut out, and we talked to the traffic committee about that, and the fencing and the pavement improvements, the extension of the sidewalks, or some of the things that were mentioned. So we're getting costs associated with that in order to bring it forward to proceed with the closing of that contract, and additional landscaping and the bio-swell that seems to have a sky, ice skating rink around it. So they assure us it's going to work properly, and we'll follow that and keep you updated. It has to be completed by November of this year. So that project, that $8 million project, thank you representative Rodney Peterson, will be, has to be closed out by November. Tried to attend the county board of commissioners meeting, that was canceled. Tried to attend the county community action board meeting, that was canceled, and the last public health meeting was canceled. But we are really trying hard to attend these meetings and to be present and to be heard on behalf of our community. And the park commission did recommend that we prohibit hunting and expand on our current ordinance to include trapping, sneering, shooting and killing of any animals, and now we'll be coming to the township board as a recommendation. Sorry. That concludes my report.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion support, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 838, thank you.